Good afternoon. We'll call this meeting for the New Ulm Planning Commission to Order. It is Thursday, October 31st at 4:30 PM. Item 2.1, to approve the minutes from the August 29th meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second?
You have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Item 2.2, September, approve the minutes from September 26th meeting, minutes.
Move to approve.
A second?
You have a motion and a second approving the minutes as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item 3, this is a public hearing, 3.1, consider the request of Scott Dreckman on behalf of Allstor Public Storage to amend the park and trail section of the city's comprehensive plan to vacate an existing trail location and approve a new trail location in the area generally located north of Carl Drive and west of North Garden Street.
Okay, the, um, as the applicant is Scott Dreckman, and he's doing this on behalf of Allstor Public Storage, he is also the property owner. On the legal description of the property, are these easement areas are located in the Dreckman subdivision and in Dreckman Second Edition. Street address is 214 Carl Drive to 220 North Highland Avenue, 2200. Date line for a decision is December 10th of this year. We've identified the land use designations both for the subject property as well as the surrounding area. The property is owned B2 or R3. Surrounding areas, we have a variety of different zoning classifications, I2, B3, R3, and B2. The site is currently used for crop farming. We have a variety of different land uses that surround this area. Notice of the public hearing was published in the newspaper on October 19th, 2019. The, Mr. Dreckman is requesting that we vacate the trail segment that is shown on our park and trail plan, that's in the comp plan, and in exchange for doing so, he'll provide a new trail location. And the vacation of the trail location would allow Mr. Dreckman to extend his existing storage facilities to the west towards North Highland Avenue. The Park and Recreation Commission, at their October 14th meeting unanimously recommended approval of the vacation with the stipulation that it, that there be an exchange of trail locations. I've provided information on, you know, the purpose of a comprehensive plan. Our plan is dated September 4th, 2007. There are three main sections to the comprehensive plan. There's a land use section, there's a street system section, and there is a park and trail section. And within that park and trail section then, there is a trails plan that is identified, and I've provided you with a copy of that in the agenda packet. The width of the existing easement area that is proposed for vacation is 20 feet on the north end and 10 feet on the south end. You have attachments which include a letter from Mr. Dreckman, a drawing that was provided by Mr. Dreckman showing the location of his existing storage facilities and the location of North Highland Avenue and Carl Drive. You have a copy of the park and trail plan that is found in our comprehensive plan. Then you have a map showing the easement area to be vacated, and you have a map showing the proposed new easement area on an aerial photo of the property. Staff would recommend approval of vacation of the trail location through the property owned by Allstor Public Storage from Carl Drive to North Highland Avenue with one condition. Staff believes that there is a suitable new location for this trail segment that would be vacated, and the vacation would facilitate the expansion of an existing business and prepare the property for future development. The one condition is that Mr. Dreckman will provide a 20-foot in-width trail from the north side of Carl Drive, from the current trail location to the west to the existing North Highland Avenue trail location. So we already have a trail located on North Highland Avenue, and so this is a short segment that then would, would connect the trails. Should note that the trail location that is to intersect with the one at Carl Drive, that is not in place, so we do have some of the easement areas in place for a trail, but there is no actual trail that you can, can use. And the intention was to utilize the underpass that is, by cash wise, it's underneath, or goes underneath US Highway 14, and to allow a direct connection to that. And so that's why this trail location was selected. There are potential motions to both recommend approval and to deny the request.
Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so anyone that wishes to speak on this matter, please go to the podium and state your concerns. Guest will say one more time, it's a public hearing. Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and then we'll take action accordingly. What are your wishes, folks?
I don't see any issue with relocating it. I guess I like the idea a little bit better than going right through the middle of the property. I guess this, you know, looking at this, we had this about a year ago, this same property, for potentially adding on to, to it. Were they aware of this at that time, a year ago, or is this something that just came up?
Uh, they were, they were aware of it a year ago when the, when the property was platted. I, I think the idea at that time was that they're, they're going to have a break in their buildings, and this would be the location where they would put it. But I think upon further review and the, the fact that this easement area extends through the remainder of the property, which is currently undeveloped, which kind of serves as a development constraint, that they would like to remove it from the property.
My recollection is back then, they were looking at expanding with more storage or possible housing.
The housing would be located on the southwest end of the property, that's correct. Yeah, so it was a combination of storage and housing.
Looks like a good proposal to me. What do you think?
I make the motion to recommend approval of the amendment of the park and trail section of the comprehensive plan to vacate the trail segment from Carl Drive to North Highland Avenue with the one condition.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second approving the request as presented. Any other discussion?
Just real quickly, I would like to note that the condition has been reviewed with Mr. Dreckman, and he, you know, agreed with it, yeah. And the reason being that that area is going to be in his setback area, so he doesn't lose any developable property.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item 3.2, consider the amendment of section 9.10 of the city code to allow residential uses in the B2 service business district zone in or adjoining the downtown area.
All right. The applicant for this, for this application is the Community Development Department. The property owner varies. The properties that we're describing are legally described as lots 8 through 10, block 69 north, lots 1 through 7, block 102 north, lots 1 through 7, block 103 north, lots 1 through 7, block 104 north, lots 8 through 14, block 67 south, and then lots 8 through 13, block 83 south. Again, those are all in, in the B2 districts surrounding the downtown area. The street address for those properties varies, and there is no deadline for decision on this proposed amendment. The comprehensive land, uh, plans, uh, land use designation for this area is both business and downtown. The surrounding land uses include downtown, medium density residential and low density residential uses. The current zoning designation is the B2 service business district. Surrounding zoning of these areas is the B1 limited business district, the B3 general business district, the R2 single and two-family residence district, and R3, the multiple family, excuse me, residence district. Current site use of, of these properties varies, and the area surrounding it also varies. We did provide a notice in the New Ulm Journal on October 19th, 2019. And what we are asking here is, is to consider amendment to the city code to allow certain residential uses in the B2 service business zoning district. So I would actually like to read through the ordinance language on attachment 1, under staff recommendation, if you wouldn't mind. So currently, under section 9.10 in the B2 service business district subdivision 3, the current language states that uses by conditional use within the B2 service business district, a building or land may be used for one or more of the following uses only by conditional use. And what we would like to do is to add additional language to that section of the, of the code, and that proposed new language would be as follows. It would be C, apartment dwellings, townhouses, row houses, and individual apartments in an existing structure, but applicable only to real property legally described as lots 8 through 10, block 69 north, lots 1 through 7, block 102 north, lots 1 through 7, block 103 north, lots 1 through 7, block 104 north, lots 8 through 14, block 67 south, and lots 8 through 13, block 183 south. A condition of any conditional use permit allowing such use shall require the provisions of, number 1, one and a half off-street parking stalls per dwelling unit. Number 2, parking stalls shall be provided onsite, or the owner of the property on which there is a dwelling unit must provide the city proof of security of said parking stalls at the time of the issuance of the conditional use and annually by January 1st of each year. Number 3, the joint business slash dwelling unit parking facilities are permitted, provided that the total number of spaces shall equal the sum of the requirements for each use. And number 4, dwelling units provided for on the main floor or first floor of a building are subject to the following requirements. A, the minimum floor area for the business shall be no less than 60% of the total main floor area and shall be no less than 850 square feet in size. B, the minimum dwelling unit size shall be no less than 400 square feet for an efficiency apartment and no less than 520 square feet for a one-bedroom apartment. And C, the residential component of the structure may not be facing the front of the building, which shall be identified in the permits. I should note that we spoke with the city attorney, and they would like a slight change to number 2, to read the following. Parking stalls shall be provided onsite, or the owner of the property on which there is a parking, or on which there is a dwelling unit must provide the city proof in the form of a contractor lease that they have obtained the right to use the necessary amount of parking stalls off-site at the time of the issuance of the conditional use permit and annually by January 1st of each year hereafter. So, planning commission considerations here. Does the planning commission believe that the proposed amendment adequately encompasses their recommendations on this matter? And then are there any additional requirements the planning commission would like to see incorporated into the proposed amendment?
Okay, again, this is a public hearing on this matter. Anyone wish to have any comments, questions, or you step to the podium, state your name and address?
Hello, my name is Dave Stoddick, I live at 1605 North Washington Street. And just to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, effectively this amendment would put residential in that list on the B2 service business district?
Uh, it would allow residential uses in the B2 under a conditional use permit.
Okay, but I guess my question would be then, where does it end? Because we allow warehouses now too in the B2 service business district, because now you're going to have warehouses, residential, service business. Would B2 in effect become pretty much whatever you want to put in there?
No, that, it would not be accurate. This is limited to the downtown area, so it's just B2 uses in the downtown area.
In the downtown.
Yeah.
How does, will the amendment state that then? It's just in that?
Yeah, the, the legal description that was provided is only for properties in the downtown area.
Okay. Thank you.
But, but Dave, going forward here, would that, it doesn't stop anybody else from asking for this in the B2 for the future, would this?
Oh, certainly. Someone could ask for a change in the B2 zoning district, but they could ask for a change in any zoning district, you know.
I guess, you know, just, we got a letter last month's meeting, you know, just to consider this for the property that's across the street from City Hall here. And now all of a sudden, we're just jumping into this. Has staff looked at what other cities have been doing? You know, we don't have anything in our paperwork here that you've talked to other communities and how they're handling it at all?
Yes, so we, we have talked to a number of other communities, and they do allow these types of residential uses in those similar types of zoning districts. Additionally, I think it's worth noting that currently in the B3, the downtown district, we allow apartment dwellings, and also we allow apartment dwellings and multiple family housing in the B1, but it skips from B1 to B3. So in the middle, in that B2 district, it doesn't mention or there's no discussion on residential uses in that district. This would serve as almost kind of a transitional zone.
Do you have any idea why that would, why that was that way? Some history, any idea?
No idea.
Seems like a gap.
You know, it just kind of seems, you know, we're, you know, we're also dealing with industrial and residential here. That's going to be the next issue after this, but then we've got this one, which just came up a month ago. And, I mean, I guess I'm taking a bigger look at it. Are, are we lacking in other areas that we need to amend? Or, you know, study it a little bit more, that we're, we're looking at our zoning and trying to do it across the board, or we're just going to take it and piecemeal it at a time?
Well, you know, we've been attempting to do a comprehensive rewrite of our zoning ordinance, but it's basically being staff-driven when we have available time, and so it has not proceeded, you know, as quickly as maybe we had hoped. So it's, you know, we can, we can do things piecemeal, but sometimes we have to because of the, you know, situations, or we can wait until, you know, the, the ordinance is completed and it's, you know, presented to the planning commission.
You know, what a, an outlaw thought would be to bring the planning commission together for like a workshop and kind of look at all these areas, you know, and then present it as a package, you know, more of a complete thought. You know, and looking at all of our areas, you know, the way New Ulm's, you know, where we're changing.
So if you could give me just a little bit more information on your, your thought there that we would present to the planning commission, what kind of information?
Well, it just seems we, we get a proposal one month, next month we're going to tackle one section, but then all of a sudden, the next month, we're getting another section. So I guess I'm looking at it as if we get an outline and where we look at where the city's growing or growth, or where people are, are looking at, they want changes within the community, and then we have time to study it and kind of go, this might work, this might not work, you know, and with conditions, or you've got different sounds and noises and, you know, factors to consider with when we're rezoning, if we're going to be adding housing in B2 now, you know, is it going to be treated differently, or, you know, because are those people going to be acceptable to, you know, the surroundings, you know? Because we're changing the surroundings essentially within our community.
Yeah, except that I would say in the downtown area, it's next to impossible to distinguish the B2 zone from the B3 zones that we have. I mean, they, they just kind of meld together, so I, I don't know that, you know, there would be a significant change. Obviously, it is an introduction of a different use that previously wasn't there, but, you know, many of the properties, in my opinion, are, you know, similar to the B3 zone properties that we have, so. But it certainly is something that if planning commission wants us to take a further look at, that we can do so. And if you would like to meet and just hold a meeting on the uses that are permitted in the, in our current zoning ordinance, and we have pretty much completed the section in the new update that we're doing, that we could present that as well. Some members of the commission probably haven't been exposed to that yet.
Well, if I'm understanding where Larry's going, if, if I would try to comply with everything you want, you're basically asking us to redo the comprehensive plan. If you want to go through all of that, and I don't know that we need to do that.
I don't know.
This is specific to downtown, so personally, I'm okay with, because it's downtown. And it's, I, you know, it's a section, and it's unique to that. But to go into all the other things that you're talking about, you'd have to touch everything in the comprehensive plan to do that, wouldn't you?
Or we look at it, over all of it, and we tackle one section at a time, and that we've kind of done some due diligence, I guess, you know. I, you know, I know we have staff reviewing it, but, you know, just checking what other communities are doing and just double-checking, I guess, you know. I'm just looking at the bigger picture and just trying to go into it a little cautiously, I guess, you know.
One clarification on the attachment 2. The sections that are in light pink on here, are those the only B2 areas in our community? In, within, where else are there B2?
Couple of obvious locations would be 7th North, as, as 15 comes into New Ulm and the Broadway, and then 20th South.
Okay.
And also on a North Broadway. When you hit the commercial section, those are, are B2 as well.
We're not changing any overall buildings where it's in back or second story, right? I mean, the front still has to be a, a business.
So the, the locations identified, or the legal descriptions identified here are specific to that, that B2 area where we had the request a month ago? I mean, that's what we're addressing, is, is that request?
Yeah, if you look at the, excuse me, if you look at the map, titled attachment 2, and those pink areas, the legal description for those pink areas is the one that's been identified in the, in the ordinance, or proposed ordinance.
So I, so I understand the question is larger about B2 as a whole versus B2 as just this, what's identified in our, our material here? I mean, that's what you were getting at, Larry?
Correct.
I guess what Larry's getting at.
Yeah.
He's, he's beyond this, this question on the bell here right now.
Yeah.
Got it.
But, you know, I'm just trying to look at all the uses too, you know, and I, you know, what if a restaurant or bar opens up right next to, you know, and change your use of the front half, and you've got a residential there, or, you know, are they going to be susceptible to the change, you know?
Yeah, but you, you already have that though in the B3 zone, where you can have those kind of uses intermixing, you know. And we also allow freestanding apartment buildings in the, in the B3 zone, like city center apartments. So, you know, we, we somewhat have that kind of potential for that kind of mix at the present time.
Did you have something, sir?
Uh, yes. If I could, I'd just like to add that when we're doing things like this, to be cautious, because I know from personal experience, hasty decisions that get made without checking all the details, it's not a lot of fun.
Did you, you went through the data, where they went out to the other cities and looked at all of that data, did that help you with where you're going, Larry?
I didn't review other cities' data. I'm, I'm asking city staff.
They got us a lot of data, so.
From other cities on this subject?
I think what you're referring to is, is the next.
Is the next, is the next issue, and that's why I was asking.
But some of that information was helpful, I thought, in this one, but.
For, but that's for the next issue, the data. And we didn't have any data from other communities on this issue.
Right, that's correct.
And that's where I was kind of going at. I'd like to hear some data, you know, other communities, a little more research, and, and I, it's easy just to say that we're going to have a public hearing today and consider it, but, you know, did we reach out to all these property owners that were considering rezoning these?
No, this is a, in ordinance, change, this really isn't a, we aren't rezoning the property. The zoning classification stays the same, we're just allowing another potential use by conditional use permit.
So they still have to apply specifically? So if someone wants to do something, they have to come and apply for it, and we can say that, that doesn't make sense, it's denied, so.
Yeah, and there are criteria for, you know, adopting or approving conditional use permits.
I mean, I like the fact about redeveloping more of the plant. I'm not trying to go against that, but I just want to make sure we're doing our due diligence and, you know, that it doesn't come back to bite us and why it wasn't looked at then 50 years ago in our current zoning. You know, and then we go from getting a letter one month, and next month, we're looking at adopting it, you know, potentially, and that's kind of where I'm going from it.
So what would the commission like us to do?
That was going to be my question. What's your proposal? Make a motion of what you want to do.
I'd like to hear what other commissioners are thinking. I'm on the console, so.
I guess I'm comfortable with what's been presented so far, because it's limiting to just the downtown area. It would be similar to, like you're describing, Dave, B3 is right next door to B2, and they're doing the same thing. It would be similar to, like you're describing, Dave, B three is right next door to B two and they're doing the same thing there. But at the same time, I, I don't see any harm in tabling this perhaps to gather more information, if that's what you're interested in. I, you know, one of the very first things that John stated here, that there is no deadline to this decision. So I guess in the name of prudence, I'm okay tabling it. However, if enough people are in favor of passing this now, I, I wouldn't stand in the way of that either. I really don't. I'd have to see some pretty compelling information to make me say this is a bad idea. But I'm not in a big hurry, so I'm, I'm fine tabling it to gather more information, if that's what others are feeling like as well.
Well, I'm not opposed to tabling it, but we also have to tell the staff what we want them to do. I mean, just tabling it doesn't do anything either. I mean, we have to give them some direction, I believe.
I agree. And I think Larry's described maybe some of what he's looking for and if staff is okay gathering some more information, then.
So you'd, you'd like to see how other cities are set up as far as their commercial zoning districts and what uses they allow in those zoning districts. Now, we're gonna, you know, that, that can be a pretty challenging assignment. So what I'd like to do is focus on what residential uses they allow in their commercial zoning districts, if that's acceptable to the commission.
That sounds good.
That sounds fair. Like I said, I just wanna make sure we're doing some due diligence. I mean, we got something to come back on and say we did a little homework and, you know. People are saying, this is, you know, I can say, this is why we're looking at doing this, you know? Other communities have done it on that aspect and it's gonna be by conditional use permit only, you know, and then the conditions would go from there. But, you know, for filling the property and making use of it, I just don't want it to bite us.
That's fine. Commission's decision.
And I think the conditional use permit is, is part of the saving grace with this, but I, I don't think there's anything wrong with getting, with getting additional information, just, you know, to, to understand what we're saying, we're gonna, why we're going forward. I think it's okay. But I do think the condition use permit is the saving grace there.
I'd, I'd like to hear a little bit from the community too, you know, in regards, you know, you know, not everybody reads the legals, so, you know.
Not everyone gets a newspaper.
Correct.
Just looking for a motion, folks. Is it too late? Don't have a motion yet, so.
Okay. One thing I would say too, when it comes to things like this, when you send out notices, how many people understand what they got? How many people know how this process all works and what a conditional use permit means? I know I sure didn't. And I'm waking up real fast, so. Kind of like what Larry said too, you know, how many people read the stuff, know what's going on, understand it? And do they, you know, how will they feel about it afterwards when something happens? So yeah, again, just be cautious. That's all I can say. Thanks.
I'll make a motion to table the voting on this issue pending gathering more information on staff's part and reviewing it then at what the next meeting or two meetings from now, whatever's reasonable.
Next meeting should be okay.
Is that enough time? Okay.
Are there any particular communities you want us to look at?
I gotta say, is there communities comparable of size or maybe layout similar?
So Hutchinson or Fairbolt, you know, Marshall or.
Sure. You know, we have a couple, I think.
Okay.
We have a motion.
Um, I'd second that motion.
Did we get a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second requesting our tabling in and requesting the staff to proceed. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Moving on to item four, reports. Oh, wait a minute. Go to three, oh, we got that. Report on the report, residential in district, is that one? Is it one of that next?
Yep.
Residential uses of industrial zoning districts.
All right. For a little bit of background here on this report, the city council gave staff a deadline requesting a response from the planning commission on this matter within sixty days from their September seventeenth, twenty nineteen, meeting or by November sixteenth, twenty nineteen. What we, staff was directed to do by the planning commission was to secure information from different resources on the subject and, and that information is as follows. So the first piece of information that we gathered is staff had sent out a thirteen question survey to twenty-six communities in Minnesota. That survey was sent through Survey Monkey and the survey was generally sent to greater Minnesota, communities of similar size and character to New Ulm. There were two metro area suburbs that were included since these communities are generally exposed to newer building trends and land use approaches than New Ulm might be. Survey questions were prepared by staff and were based on, on the discussion held by the planning commission and the city council on, on this subject. So of the twenty-six communities that the survey was sent out to, twenty-one communities responded to the survey, roughly eighty percent response rate to the survey. So, excuse me, the survey questions and the responses to all thirteen questions can be found on attachment one of, of this report. But I should note that the communities that did respond to the survey are as follows. So we had Fergus Falls, Hutchinson, Albert Lee, Fairmont, Farbo, Bemidji, Austin, Red Wing, Worthington, Winona, Wasika, Stillwater, Wilmer, North Mankato, St. Peter, Marshall, Northfield, Brainerd, and Detroit Lakes. And then the two suburb, kind of suburban communities that responded were Chanhassen and Shakopee. So here's a few notes regarding those twenty-one survey responses that we received. So eighty percent of the communities or seventeen of the respondents do not allow any residential uses in their industrial zoning districts. So of that, twenty percent or the four communities that do allow residential uses, they are limited to the following. One of them noted that it's permitted in the I three above the first floor only. So in this case, the purpose of that I three zoning district is to allow diversified industrial, commercial and residential development in their older core area of their community and then to preserve existing and encourage new construction and land use conversion in that, in that area. The second respondent said that they're conditionally permitted in all industrial districts if the dwelling is in conjunction, conjunction with the business in the commercial or industrial district. The applicant must then demonstrate to the satisfaction of the city council that the dwelling is necessary to the proper conduct of the business. Staff spoke with this community directly over the phone and at this time, they have, they don't have any of these dwelling units in their industrial districts. Third response was that light industrial uses may include residential uses in a PUD. PUD is a planned unit development, a planned unit development, but the industrial use must be primary. So staff also spoke with this community and the purpose of those PUDs would be to provide that transition space between industrial and residential uses. We had another respondent say that an apartment for onsite security personnel can be included within the building structure and that is permitted as an accessory use. And then lastly, we had a respondent tell us that multi, multifamily dwellings are conditional use in one of their zoning districts, districts, that's their I one planned industrial district, as long as they're associated with that industry. And then they gave an example, if three M had apartments on their property for their own three M employees. We asked the question about allowing standalone, single-family residences within the zoning, industrial zoning districts in these communities. One hundred percent of the communities that responded stated that they do not allow standalone single-family dwellings in their industrial districts. Of the communities surveyed, ninety percent or nineteen of the communities do allow the construction of a chouse in their industrial zoning districts. In our survey, we described chouses as a combined storage slash workspace with living quarters. So of those communities, ten percent or two communities that allow this use, they would require the following to allow that use. Again, it would be only allowed in the I three if it were above the first floor only. And, you know, it's the same respondent as the question stated above. In all this, in all instances where this type of structure would be allowed, it must be accessory to the primary use of the industrial district. It would require a conditional use permit in all their industrial districts. And then the last respondent said it would require rezoning of that property.
Can I just clarify? Ninety percent do not, right? I think you said do.
Oh, sorry.
Just wanna make sure that the writing is correct, right?
Yes, thank you.
One other thing I would like to note is that you see I three and I one. Those designations don't match up with ours. They, they can be completely different. They're industrial, but that could be the only similarity. So kind of don't think that says, okay, I one, that's the same as our I one. Not necessarily.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Communities were then asked more information on the zoning districts where they would allow the construction of a chouse and their responses, which nearly every community did give a response, can be viewed on question nine and ten of the attachment. I believe there's nineteen individual responses there. And then we, then we had asked them kind of a last question on how frequently do they feel like they have to deal with people living in storage buildings in their communities on a scale of one to ten? One being they don't have to deal with it often, ten being that it's a, it's a major problem. So the majority of the respondents said it wasn't a problem. But one community did give it a seven, saying it was a problem. There was another community that gave it a, a three. So it was a slight problem. So everybody that responded is aware of a situation like that in their community, but it's not often that they have to deal with it. So that was the first survey that was sent out. There was, there was an additional survey sent out on the, uh, survey to property owners regarding a possible introduction of residential uses in the industrially zoned area bounded by Nineteenth South, South Minnesota and Seventeenth South and South German Streets. That's referred to, or we're referring to it as the subject area. Included in that area described above, the survey was also sent out a hundred seventy-five feet outside of that subject area to include surrounding, to include surrounding properties as requested by the planning commission. So we sent out nineteen surveys. We had eleven responses back in the mail and then we also had an additional phone call response. Survey information that was provided to the property owners is, is seen in attachment two. But we really just asked one, one question, which that question is, would it be acceptable, acceptable to you to allow residential use inside or as part of a private storage building? So we sent that out in a survey form and we did have three options for answering that question. One being is, yes, this would be acceptable to us. Two, I see problems with this, please don't do it. And then three, I don't care. So what we did then, once we received the survey responses, we kind of separated out the answers by those that are actually within the block, the area described above, and then also those that are outside of, of that area within that one hundred seventy-five feet. So the responses are as follows. The ones within that subject area who believed it would be acceptable, we had three responses that believed it would be acceptable. Responses within that one hundred seventy-five foot zone, we actually had four respondent that it would, it would be acceptable, that fourth one being the, the phone call that we received. As far as responses from people that see a problem with this, we had two responses within the subject area that saw a problem with it. And then we also had two responses in that one hundred seventy-five foot zone that also said they would see a problem with it. We did have one respondent say they didn't care and that response was within that subject area we were describing. And they were also asked if they wanted to provide any additional comments to the survey that they would like us to hear. So as far as the respondents that said it would be acceptable to them, we didn't receive any further comments in the paper survey. But as far as the ones that did see a problem with it, the ones that said, I see a problem with this, don't, don't do it. I'm gonna read their responses. The first one was that in no way would I be for this. Once you do this, you start a precedent and others will follow. There is a reason this land is zoned as it is, so leave it alone. It would not be fair to others who wanted to do this in the past. Once you start building houses on land, the taxes on our sheds will no doubt go up because of this. There are plenty of houses for sale in New Ulm. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions on the above. So that was one response. Second one was, there are too many questions to answer this in any other way. Would this be setting a precedent? What about the storage units? Would those be able to be used as residences? The third comment we received is, there should be no houses allowed, period, and zoning should not be changed. We did have one response from the respondent who said they didn't care. And they said, I have no issues with this change as long as the changes on, I have no issues with this change as long as nothing changes on my side of it, for example, my taxes. The people who would like to, excuse me, use this change should understand that the others who have land and buildings in this area will probably not change their habits to keep it quiet for someone who might live in the area during business hours or not. Additionally, staff, we, we made a telephone call, the planner and community development director called New Ulm Steel and Recycling and noted that we had not received a response from them. They indicated they did not wish to take a position on the matter. They indicated that they didn't, they were not opposed to man caves, but would not want to be seen, would not want to see families located in that area. Should note that before the survey was sent out, we did send the survey to city councillor Larry Mack for his review and comment and he said to send it out as it was presented.
Okay, another piece of information that the planning commission had requested of us at the last meeting was how much vacant industrial property is located in the city of New Ulm. And so I'd like to refer you to attachment three for that information. And you will note that, you know, we currently have two industrial zoning districts, I one and I two. And so we looked at building permit data from twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen and we were looking at new industrial development during that time period. So we did not include development activities that involved private building additions. So a good example of that would be Furmanich, has got something going on right now, or Kraft also has a project going on right now. We didn't include any public buildings, so, you know, we did some work on our animal control building. Our police and fire department have built a new building, so we didn't include that, even though it's an industrial zoning district. And we didn't include any of the relocations, Winding's being a, a good example of, of that. The other thing I would note is our research results are approximate because there is some subjective decisions that have to be made in going through this process. I should note that our building permit records provide the good information in which to take a look at a subject like this. If, there's a box that is provided and. Um, if I, there's a box that is provided and um uh we um lay out the information by year, but I'd like you to go down to the bottom of uh that particular uh box, and you will see that um there were a total of twenty-five uh building permits that we considered uh to be for new industrial development over that five-year time period. Um, from an acreage standpoint, that's twenty-two point oh seven acres that was involved, and that uh is an annual average of four point four acres a year. Then we broke, broke the acreage by um zoning district, so we've got I one, I two. Um, if you look at the total, uh we had six point nine acres in I one, fifteen point one six in I two. Um, then we broke the uh building permits down by zoning district, so we had six in the I one and nineteen in the I two. And then uh with the building permit data that we got, there's a description of the type of building, and the type of building that um kept on appearing on the building permit were storage buildings or sheds. And so you'll note that um of the twenty-five building permits that were issued in that time period, twenty of them were for storage sheds. And if you look at it by zoning district, um, we had four in the I one and sixteen in the um, in the I two. Um, now, the, the one thing that I would, would just draw your attention to is in the second box on the bottom of the page, it says um undeveloped industrially-zoned properties. And we broke that up by I one, I one other, I two, and I two other. And I would note that uh when we use the term other, that refers to vacant property that we do not believe is available for development. And a good example of that would be Three M, who has sizable parcels of property on either side of uh their building down on uh South or North Front Street. And we've at least been told in the past, um, you know, by Three M that that property is not available for development. So there are some other situations where we have that. Windings uh just um took over um some property, uh there are two uh lots there that um are undeveloped, but, you know, they're theirs, and they have not indicated that they're going to be available, at least at this time. So we had to make some decisions in, in those kind of situations. So that's where the, the other category uh comes from. Um, but um, the one thing that I would note is in the I two, we got fourteen point five acres. Um, that's in thirty-five parcels, and you can see what the s- uh, uh, size is, uh, the, the range from fairly small to, you know, about two acres. Um, so in the I two zone, it would appear that we maybe got a four to five year supply of um, of land, so that's something that um we probably, you know, should be paying some attention to. The other thing I would note is that um we don't know about land availability. There could be parcels of property that are empty that we've identified here, but they may not be available. You know, a property owner could be just um sitting on it for, for whatever reason. So, you know, we don't have um that kind of information either. So this is kind of uh that I would say uh, you know, I use the term approximate, and that's, I think, the best way to, to present it. Okay? Any questions on that?
You, you said that you felt there were five to six years of um property available. How did you make, how do you make that call?
Okay, I went to the um total acreage, um, under the I two is fourteen point five acres.
Mm-hmm.
And if um we assume that um three acres a year, which um is um what I took from um, um, up in the, the upper box, uh, in the bottom row, we talk about um three acres, um, you know.
I see.
Per year, that, that's how I came up with uh, with that number. So, continuing on, um. Uh, there, there's been some discussion about auto condos. Um, it's a concept that obviously we haven't seen in New Ulm, but we have seen in um, or heard about in the metropolitan area. And so we contacted uh three communities that um had those kind of complexes. Uh, Medina and Chan Hessen were two of them, and then there was a third in Columbus. Um, and the um Chan Hessen and Medina advised us that um they do not allow overnight use of the, of their auto condo facilities. And then um after this uh report was prepared and sent out, we did get a call from Columbus, and we were advised uh by them that they also um don't have residential use of those um, of those spaces. Um, another uh topic that came up was about the uh Mankato Autosports Complex. Apparently, um, this is a proposal that has been made in which um there's kind of a driving track and um garages uh for um, for automobiles. I'm, I'm not real clear about the specifics. We did talk to staff from the city of Mankato, um, and they advised us that um, you know, what they knew about the project, but that they no longer were working on it because the project had moved to Eagle Lake. So we talked to uh the, the mayor of Eagle Lake, um, and um he advised us that they're in the process of having an environmental assessment worksheet prepared, and that um how the um, um, project uh will proceed, uh there, they haven't gone beyond that. So there really weren't any details that he was able to uh, to share with us. I should note that um in talking to the uh Mankato staff, that uh they did indicate that there would be um a, a residential component to the project that um they had talked um about, but that it would be seasonal. So that um, it's something that would be used, I assume, in the spring, summer, and fall, but that um when winter occurred, that there would be um no occupancy. We don't know if that's what's going to take place at Eagle Lake or not. Um, the final thing uh that we did is, uh, we had been directed, I think, to contact the League of Minnesota Cities, and so we did so. And um, we have their um email uh chain uh that uh went between uh primarily John and um league staff on this matter. Um, you know, their attorney indicated uh that they do not believe it is common to allow a single-family dwelling in an industrial district, but it may depend on the approach. They did, did mention that nationally, there have been trends towards allowing artists' lofts in industrial areas. As for allowing the construction of a chouse, the league thought that many city ordinances would not allow them. Um, I might note that um when we use the term chouse, uh, I believe it was the league staff, that was the first time they had heard of that uh term. Um, so then you have um attachments, some of which uh we have gone, or all of which we've gone over with you. So that's um the research that uh we've done in the uh past two months.
Well, I'd just make a comment, you guys did an excellent job on the research and getting the data, so we've got a lot, a lot of information here. But now I need to help you, you need to help me out. My understanding is, we had an issue before us, which we took action on, which we sent to the council. And when the council got it, as I understand it, they wanted information. Is that this information, or are we supposed to take some action on this now?
I guess I would think maybe Larry is in a better position to answer that question than I am.
I guess we brought it back to the planning commission, you know, for staff to bring information, to educate the council on what other communities have done, and then to look forward to planning commission and how we should proceed with recommendations, you know, as far as the city, meaning we did our due diligence, we've looked at it. Uh, you know, we can take that and assess it from there. I guess, you know, you know, we, do we want to open it up to the community, or, you know, for discussion, you know, or to the property owners, perhaps? I know we have a few property owners present today, I don't know if they wish to speak or have any uh thoughts on it.
Well, I'm a little confused, because we had an action before us on our agenda several months ago.
Yeah.
Which we did, we held a public hearing, and we wanted more information, and it went to the council, and that happened. Now, it's not on our agenda to take any action today, as I understand it.
Well, the, the reason we didn't um put um, you know, um, an action um item is that that really is up to you as to how you want to proceed. Um, you know, the, the council um did take action on the um original request to, you know, rezone one lot and change a comp plan for that. So that, that's been taken care of. So then, the council kind of sent it back to the planning commission and said, okay, we want you to take a further look at residential uses in industrial zoning districts. And so, at our last meeting, we talked about that, and so um I think the decision then was that staff would uh generate some information uh on this topic, and so now I think um it's um, you know, you, up, it's uh up to you to decide how you want to proceed. Um, and um I know I, we're supposed to complete this within sixty days, but um that might be um a little bit um, not enough time to.
So what is the official status on what we dealt with when we made a decision the day we were here, and that we sent to the council? What's the status of that?
Okay, that was denied.
Is that open, or is that closed?
No, that's, that's done.
That's closed?
So now, now we're, now we're moving on to a different topic, basically.
Okay. So this is for here forward?
Yes.
Not going, not going backwards?
No, we're not going backwards.
So this would potentially change the comprehensive plan? Is that the, oh, I mean, is that what would have to be done? Because there was a legal issue why we kind of couldn't move forward before.
Yeah, so, you know, we've got two different documents that come into play when we consider requests like this. We have the comprehensive plan, and we have the zoning ordinance. So the zoning ordinance is probably the more important of the two documents. So um, I think um what the council was uh saying, okay, in our zoning ordinance are, is it, would it be appropriate to make changes? So I think that's maybe, you know, what your focus should be. Based on what you decide to do with the zoning ordinance, then it may be necessary to make changes to the comprehensive plan. You may decide not to do anything at all, you know. The council could decide to make some changes, though, so, you know, it.
So do we want to move forward with potentially making change to the zoning ordinance? Is really what they're asking us to recommend?
Look, if, if we would like to proceed with other zoning amendments for future, going forward, you know, we're looking for that indication, you know, meaning we've got more research, you know, to, that we presented to the council, council as a whole. Still, the council will have a final say in how they want to do it, but we have to have a reason why we'd want to change it. You know, we can't just say it's, we want to grow the tax base, you know.
So we were looking, are all the other cities doing it? We're out of line, our zoning doesn't make sense? That's kind of what we're looking for with the research.
Yeah, we did some due diligence, you know. We, we hear, hear they hearsay, but, you know, until we have some hard facts, we did some surveying, you know, of the adjoining property owners, or ones within one hundred and seventy-five feet on that aspect, you know. My out loud is, you know, after sitting on this and thinking on it a little bit more, you know, I'm going to go into it a little cautious, you know, about thinking about the German Street part of it from Seventeenth to Nineteenth, you know. I personally don't really think the, the Minnesota Street from Seventeenth to Nineteenth is really an issue. And I guess my thoughts are is, because we have similar situations on Minnesota Street on North and South, and I would state, you know, that out down by Three M, you know, we have uh across the street, you have Schultz Plumbing right in between residential. Uh, you have uh some duplexes between Windings and Three M. And then going further south, you know, we have New Ulm Bus Lines, we have a residential right in, in between, you know, and, and we've got residential now uh right behind the Alternative School, Riverbend, you know, and I guess I'm, the more I'm leaning is just that, leaving German Street there is a buffer, you know, because that's directly uh behind New Ulm Steel and Recycling with their shredder machine, you know, and then to, for, leave that for storage, but, you know, that uh. I'd like to hear what the rest of the commissioners think, maybe for possibly Minnesota Street, or how you feel German Street, you know, I guess, I personally don't see this, those two blocks being a major development for a large manufacturing.
Which two blocks?
Between Seventeenth South Minnesota Street to Nineteenth South Minnesota Street, the German Street. So we're going to get a big factory to come in there or anything of that.
That's where the storage sheds are now.
Correct, but further south, there's land available, probably around between Eighteenth
My struggle is, we, we could, we start talking backwards again to existing, and we can't do anything about existing. I mean, if they complied with the zoning at the time, we can't change that. Um, I am open to the future, no question about that, but um, don't, don't want us, we're using things that are perfectly acceptable at the time, and very zoning, and using that as an example, we can't change that. I'm in favor of looking at more for the future, but I have no interest in going backwards.
Yeah, I would um, you, uh, for um, an opinion that I'd be cautious about looking to things that have happened in the past, because really the purpose of zoning is to look to the future. I mean, if you look to the past, we probably could justify any rezoning in the city of New Ulm, because I probably can find you a situation where, you know, we've got houses next to industry and industry, you know, next to commercial, and, you know, we, we've got, you know, those kind of zones, those kind of locations. You know, the, the purpose of zoning is, as we progress into the future, we're trying to um separate these uses, you know, as development takes place. So, um, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to look forward.
I guess my thoughts as well are, is if we're proceeding with caution with uh the B two district, uh, I would proceed as, with as much caution with this uh in an industrial area.
I'm still a little confused on the deadline, help me. Who's got the deadline of November, us or the council?
Um, the, the, the deadline was um established by the city council, and it was um, I guess, applies to the planning commission and um uh the request by the council that um you provide um recommendations uh within that timeframe.
Their request was to gather information, refer it back to you with a deadline to get response, correct?
I think it was to gather information, and if you have recommendations that you want to offer, you, you know, um, whatever that may be, that you would do it within that timeframe.
I guess, you know.
I don't know, Larry, do you think um the, the council might be um agreeable to perhaps allowing another thirty days, or?
You know, I, I think the council, a lot of it, just didn't want it to go on dead years, you know, we wanted to make sure that staff was moving forward with it, and, you know, there's continuous plan. And, you know, there's continuous plan of it. Does it have to be done in 60 days? We're not going to rechange zoning in 60 days. But, you know, we're doing due diligence, we're looking at it, looking at ways going forward for the future and how to develop, say, this particular area within our community. And looking for, you know, the planning commission to say, you know, have open eyes on it and how they might perceive it for the future, you know, whether it's one part of it or the entire thing of it, you know, or...
Wasn't one of their main requirements, though, to know what other communities are doing? Which this document, everything you gave us, you have a lot of information of all the other communities and what they're doing. I think they were looking for some guidelines of what other communities are doing. So, this information applies with that, as far as I'm concerned.
I think it gives us a good outline. And the rest of the council, unless they've looked at the agenda for tonight, they won't get this information until tomorrow afternoon, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, you know...
So, clarifying again, is the question that the council was asking us to look at more was the use of residential use in industrial zones? Or is it around changing zoning for some industrial areas in the community? Because I hear two different things here as we're talking about this.
I'm looking at changing zoning for this designated area between 17th South to 19th South. That we're looking at it.
And I ask that because, you know, the request was for a staff report on residential uses in industrial zoning districts. And you've gotten some great information that I hope the council is able to look at.
Very good information.
Well, the council will get this tomorrow afternoon.
Right, right.
They've had access to it since the agenda came out Tuesday afternoon, you know, online for, you know. I don't know if they've been following it or on that capacities.
And yeah, my recommendation's on really good information gathering, good data.
You know, it could be that the council on Tuesday decides to drop it. They've received enough and they filed it, or they might just say, you know...
So, we could make a recommendation, or we could just say, we want the information provided to the council, and they can make their own decision.
You could do that.
At this point in time, there's not an action item on...
No, there's not an action item.
So, you know, it's just, we've reviewed it.
We can receive it and forward it to the council.
On that aspect, you know, we can take public information, if anybody wishes to speak, for public comment too here, and, you know.
Yeah, I think, you know, you are the community's planning body. So, generally, you know, recommendations on zoning or on land use, on subdivision of property comes from this group. So, you know, there's nothing wrong with forwarding information to the city council, but, you know, I think the council was also looking for maybe some recommendations from this group as to what you think is or is not appropriate. I, is that accurate, or...
I would accept that. And one of my thoughts leaving here today would be, you know, leaving German Street, you know, as a buffer zone, 17th to 19th on the subject, two blocks, you know. But yet, consider, you know, the thoughts about how to develop 17th South Minnesota Street to 19th, and how we see that as a future. And is there an issue with putting a single-family home there? And that's where I stated the north Minnesota Street and south Minnesota Street were, and I know that's looking past, but I'm also looking for the future here. And, you know, how do we see 18th South Minnesota Street to 19th? And we also have that on both sides, east and west of Minnesota Street there.
All I need is a motion.
Oh, no, I think someone would like to speak.
Yes, Arlen Body, 700 North Payne, Newham. I guess I just wanted to add a little more information that wasn't brought up today. The subject lot that we're looking at, I've owned that for several years. And we keep talking about buffer zones and this and that. Well, the whole block there, the seven lots that are on that 1700 block. I own five of them, my dad owns the other two. So, they're pretty much developed as far as they're going to go, except for this one lot that is singled out on the corner. I also own the lot below that, which would be across the alley. So, with that being said, there is no industry or manufacturing that's going to be happening in any of the immediate vicinity. And also, across the street from this lot, that's the subject lot on the map, there is already residential housing. It's just across the street. So, I don't see it blocking out any kind of industry or manufacturing moving into the area. The area is basically being turned into a storage facility area for a lot of private owners. And that basically doesn't come into any different use than what a garage does to everybody's neighbors. So, I don't see the problem there. Then, the salvage yard gets brought up as an issue. Well, there's houses that already exist closer to that than this property would. So, I mean, and the survey did come out, and the majority of the people did say they have no problem with this. And maybe some of them don't, you know, don't realize that I have that much of a buffer zone around the subject area that it really shouldn't cause or create a problem with anybody. I'll have more buffer zone there than you have with your neighbor's house from 10 feet away, or their garage that might be 60 feet away. You know, there's, there are buffer zones, it's not a dangerous area, there's housing across the street. So, I just kind of wanted to add that to bring everything up to speed on my side, so, thanks.
You know, and I'd like to maybe add that between 16th and 17th on the east side of the street, that's R3. So, there could be an apartment building built right there overlooking storage buildings and overlooking Newham Steel and Recycling, is that correct, staff? That's currently in R3?
It's currently zoned R3, and in our comprehensive plan, it's designated for industry. And so, one thing that staff has talked about is where we have those kind of discrepancies between our comp plan and our zoning map, that we need to bring those to your attention. And you can make some decisions on how you want to proceed, because they should line up.
Do you want to make a motion?
Anybody else in the commission have any thoughts? Because I guess I'd like to bring information, you know, from the other commissioners, you know, to the council meeting for Tuesday on their thoughts and views on this.
Well, I think one thing that I surmised from reading through the information you gathered is that the city's use of industrial zoning is similar to what everyone else's is. There is not another community who allows a single-dwelling home to be built in a industrial-zoned area. So, we're consistent. I got that from the information that you gathered. And I would like the council to get, see some of this information. I think it's just very valuable to help them kind of get their bearings around the issue. So, it would be my only recommendation, I guess.
Well, I'm looking to get this referred back to the council, receive all of the information. It is very good information, you've done an excellent job. And then, advice to the council would be to move slowly on any rezoning, based on the information we have.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see any information that was brought to us that we're out of line or that, you know, we're behind the times and...
Okay, well, then there, you know, if that's the action that you would like to take, then we should have a motion in a second to forward this information.
I'll take a shot at it, nobody wants to anyway.
Well, I...
A sensitive issue, so let's, I'm going to make a recommendation, or a motion to receive the information and refer it to the city council with our opinion to move cautiously on any rezoning.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, do we have any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, we'll get this to the council, would be one, next week then, or what?
Yeah.
Yep.
Right, clear as mud, right? Do I find myself where we're at now then? I think we're down to the city council decisions.
Okay, there was nothing that occurred at the October 1st meeting that involved the planning commission. At the October 15th meeting, there was a public hearing on the final plat of the Polco addition. That was the property that Pullman Lumber Company is purchasing from John Hyman or Heiko. That was approved. At that same meeting, there are a couple items that you may find of interest. One is that the city engineer requested authorization to proceed with getting proposals for improvements to the Palmer Avenue roadway and a utility extension, and that would be for the National Guard project. We have to comply with MINDOT requirements regarding the roundabout. And then, we're extending utilities and that's the street for a certain distance to allow access to the National Guard property. And that property is still scheduled to take place starting next spring, I guess, so. And then, a similar request was made for 20th North Street. And that would involve the property from North Broadway to North Front, and then on North Front from 19th to 20th. And both of those requests for proposals were authorized by the city council. Something else that occurred at that meeting had to do with blight. And they had first consideration of an ordinance that would amend the penalties for properties that were found to be in violation of our blight ordinance. And in the past, it was just one set dollar amount, you know, per occurrence. And what they authorized or held the first reading on is a stepped penalty system where, you know, the first time it's $100, if it's the same problem, same location. Second time, it's $300, third time, it's $500. And that would be over a 12-month time period. So, sometimes blight issues can be found in zoning ordinances as well. So, I thought it'd be advisable just for you to be aware of that. That takes curve it.
Okay, anything from the heritage people?
No, we did not have a meeting this month, no.
Okay. Next month's meeting, Thanksgiving, we're going to meet on a week ahead?
Yeah, we do have, we do not have any agenda items that have been submitted, but I am anticipating that we will be receiving some agenda items. What's that? Oh, and that's been submitted already, that's right, okay. We have had one item submitted. So, we will be meeting on the 21st, and we will...
21st, is that what it is?
Yeah, 4:30 in the council chambers.
Okay. Then I only had one other little comment. If any of you have some people that you know of or whatever that might be interested in being on the planning commission, Mr. Boyzeman would sure like to get some names because there will be an opening or two next year. And so, if you think of anybody, get the name to Mr. Boyzeman. Okay? No other business, meeting adjourned, thank you.